Maybe they didn't hear it? Maybe they did it louder?
Go back.
(laughing) (knocking on door) One more. I now call to order the October 18th, 2021 meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees. Current time, 6:02. Let the minute show that a forum is present with all members in attendance with Mr. Mixon being absent. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Trout. Remain standing for Pledge of Allegiance and honor the Texas flag. Ms. Perkel.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
All right. Item two on the agenda is recognition. First up, we have Crippin Elementary, Ms. Mays. Where are you? There we are. How are you?
Good. Thank you for having us tonight.
Yes, we're excited.
Hope you enjoyed that fall break. It was lovely. Okay, so I have some wonderful people to recognize tonight. We're going to start with our students because that's who we should always start with. This is beautiful Nadine Carcassus. Nadine came to Crippin in second grade from Ben's Branch Elementary. She has the most beautiful soul. She genuinely cares and loves everyone. She makes straight A's. She ran for president of the Crippin Elementary National Honor Society. She is empathetic to all students and gives the sweetest hugs to everyone she encounters. She is also a beautiful singer on the astronaut choir and spreads joy in her church and to all she encounters. Her mom and her brother both work at Crippin Elementary as a teacher and a paraprofessional. Congratulations, Nadine. (applause) Okay. Next up is one of my most favorite teachers of all time, and this is Ms. Elizabeth Avanata. So Elizabeth has worked at Crippin now for six years. She was an aide at New Caney Elementary when I was the assistant principal there. Then she moved on to be a student teacher with the Texas Tech Teaching Candidates. She's a phenomenal second grade teacher. She plans engaging lessons, creates lasting relationships, and she leads the team by example and comes up with creative solutions. That's the thing with her. She'll never complain, but she comes up with solutions and good ones, too, that are always in the best interest of kids. She's been our dual-language team leader, member of our site-based decision-making committee, volunteers on other committees, tutors our fourth and fifth graders for House Bill 4545 when we needed someone and she stepped up to do it. She's a campus rep for the Campus Advisory Committee that goes for the district and is a role model for all the students, and I'm proud to be her principal. (applause) Okay. Is that so? Here we go. Okay, so Ms. Laura was a former Porter High School student, and I hired her as soon as I could to be an EL aide, a special ed aide, a PE aide, and she most recently promoted to be our campus registrar. She's super calm and positive and chill and has a great demeanor that's just a breath of fresh air. All the students and parents in the community love her. She's a go-getter, funny to boot, and I'm proud to work with her each day. To Ms. Edna Laura. (applause) Okay, and next up is Ms. Adelaida Torres. She is our custodial staff member, and I am going to let Ms. Androtti read it so that she can understand it for us because she just does everything with a smile. She's our assistant right-hand lady to the head custodian. She's been there, I think, the whole time that I've been there. She's never missed a day of work. She keeps our floors shining. She hugs our students. And her daughter also works at our campus as a pre-K aide, just the best family. So I want Ms. Androtti to read it for her.
Adelaida, Ms. Mays le quiere decir que ustedes de que llegó siempre ha trabajado ahí con ella. Es la mano derecha de Ms. Malaski, nuestra jefa de los custodios. Usted ama a los niños, siempre hace todo con una sonrisa y nunca falta. No ha faltado ni un solo día. Mantiene los pisos brillantes y lo hace con mucho orgullo. Su hija también trabaja para Crippin como ayudante de pre-kindle y es una de las mejores familias que tenemos sirviéndole a nuestros estudiantes. Gracias, Adelaida.
Thank you. Oh, and our cafeteria has a second job, so she wasn't able to be here tonight because she's working hard, but she's great, too.
Up next, King's Manor. Just paying how are you? Good. How's it going?
Great. I feel refreshed after that break. It was wonderful. All right. Our student couldn't make it tonight. She is a new big sister, and they have their third little girl that they just had last week. So their hands were a little full, but I can talk about her in just a moment. So I want to introduce you guys to our team here. I'm going to recognize our teacher, Ms. Shannon Crochet. She's our lead sped teacher on campus, and she's wonderful. She's an advocate for all of her students and for the teachers on campus as well. She's a team player and always does what is right. She's very wise and reasonable, and she's a campus leader that I value feedback from, and I go to her often, you know, to help us make decisions. She's on all of our committees. She's part of the A team with the district. She tutors our 4545 students, and she's also a fellow boy mom. She has three boys who have been through New Caney or is in New Caney District now, and I'm a boy mom, so we both have three boys, and so I go to her often for boy mom advice. So I just value her so much. (applause) All right. Our next employee is our EL para, Ms. Davina Correo. And oh, our student got to make it. (applause) Yes! I know. Yes, total grand entrance. I love that. Great job. So Ms. Correo, she was a parent at King's Manor, and she was part of our PTO and helped with all kinds of things. She has three KME koalas or one is, yeah, at Woodridge now, but she has two that are still there with us at KME, and I was so excited when she came and said, hey, I'm ready to return to the workforce. So I'm kind of putting my name out there, and I literally snatched her away at the para job fair. I think she might have been talking to another school. I was like, oh, no, 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 we're talking over here. But guys, that was the best thing. She is wonderful, and we knew we needed her on our team. She's already had perfect attendance this nine weeks for our faculty, and she joins Ms. Tolbert each morning outside as part of our Good Morning Welcome Crew, and she's there at 6:45, helping everyone get out of the cars, singing songs, playing music. She's eager to help in any way. She's so flexible, and she's just been a wonderful asset to our team. (applause) Okay. All right. Our next recognition is from Child Nutrition, and that is Ms. Amy Polaris. This is what our cafeteria manager said about Amy. She said she is her right-hand person and that she would not be able to do her job without her. She's there every day, helping our kids. Ms. Brenda, Ms. Amy, right there, checking them out for their lunches, their breakfast. And so I talked to some students as well about Ms. Amy, and they said, she's always so nice and helpful, and she remembers my name. Even if I'm like 13th in line, she remembers my name. So thank you so much, and we appreciate her hard work and for her building those positive relationships with all of our students. Thank you. (applause) Okay, let's see. All right, and our Mr. Rick Best, one of our custodians, is just amazing, so we appreciate him so much. He's such a hard worker. He helps all of us on campus. He'll try to do something first before he allows us to turn in a work order or call anybody else to fix anything. Every day, he comes in and checks up on us and asks how we're doing. He lends a smile to everyone that he sees, and over the past year and a half, he's done a phenomenal job keeping our school sanitized and helping us reduce sickness, you know, and the low attendance. His efforts are so appreciated, so thank you. (applause) All right. And our student, Ms. Emma. So Ms. Emma Fochman, she is a fun and bubbly, spunky thing, as you guys saw tonight. She has totally exemplified the passion-first mentality that we're learning from our seven mindsets, and she has become the youngest member of our Good Morning Welcome Crew and Safety Patrol at KME. And she was meant to be a greeter for all of those who enter our school each day, and we had a slow start getting our Welcome Crew and Safety Patrol going this year with everybody being on campus, and she knew that was what she was meant to do. And her dad brings her early every morning. She greets all of our teachers as they enter the campus. Then as the students arrive, she greets all of them. She gets there early every day. She puts on her safety vest, and she personally welcomes everyone that walks through our doors or to our campus every morning, and we appreciate her so much. Thank you, Emma. (applause) Thank you, guys.
Okay. Moving on to item three on the agenda is delinquent tax report. Mr. Allen, are you presenting tonight for line burger for us?
Yes, sir.
On our delinquent tax report. We appreciate you guys supporting us at the East Montgomery County Fair. Do appreciate you guys.
Oh, happily. We love coming out to see what it does for the kids and the community. And I'm Allen, and y'all hire me to do two things. Collect delinquent taxes and keep it short. So that's exactly what we're going to do tonight. I am now going to begin a timer on a 60-second drill. So here's the game plan. Y'all have in your board packets a board report, and down you will find the first bar chart looks like this. You're going to start to see the backup data to having a fantastic collection year last year for tax year 2019 and the first three months of this year that we're collecting, tax year 2020. On this first pie chart, you're going to see the numbers over the first three months of the year, which is the big collection push. You're going to see those numbers trending upwards despite COVID-19. Flipping over to the next page, you're going to see those exact same numbers, but now you're talking about year-to-date. So for the two back years that came before the three months were on, you have full-year data, and then you have just three months out of the year, which is why it looks like there's less, but that's actually just this year. So that's our 60-second drill. The bottom line, you'll find plenty of backup in here to see that collections are stronger this year and last year even than in the past. Any questions?
Timer.
Timer? I'm ignoring that. I think I hit like about 1:10 roughly, so I flunked my 60-second drill. Any questions, though?
No, sir. We appreciate you working hard for us.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. We love working for you guys.
We appreciate you.
Take care.
Item four on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip. Ms. Brooke Lyles will be presenting.
So I don't know if I can do it in 60 seconds, but I'm requesting approval for out-of-state travel for one of our students to attend National FFA Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana. She's an Area 11 officer. She was elected last May. We will have one chaperone go with her, and she represents our district well. She's a New Caney High School student. She'll be loving, like I said. She would be here in official dress, but they had a district camp at the Ag Barn today that she led. She went back to the campus for volleyball practice, and now she's back at the Ag Barn for Ag Olympics. She did write a letter. I won't read it, but I will let you see it. It's a pretty sweet letter requesting approval. Do you have any questions?
(inaudible).
Okay. Area 11 pays for everything excluding the students' meal money, and then we'll pay for all teacher expenses.
Okay. Are there other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state trip? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion or vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. No, the motion is approved. Thank you, Ms. Brooke. Moving into item five on open forum. We have no one signed up for open forum. Now we're moving into item six, which is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of Texas Government Code 551.074 for the purpose of personal matters, Government Code 551.071 for attorney consultation, and Government Code 551.072 deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease, or real value property. Any action as a result, a closed session discussion will take place when the board reconvenes in open meeting. Current time is 6:20.
everybody to get a sneak peek of West Fork High School, their mascot and the colors and everything coming together nicely, as well as an update on the construction process down there. So I know Ms. Hines is especially excited to see all this coming together. August will be here before we know it, so it's an exciting time for sure. Wanted to give you all an update about a topic that we've been discussing for a while now, really dove in deep last spring, and that is involving our start and stop times for our school. The principals, cabinet, and I, we've been visiting about this topic for a while, and we are looking into changing those times for next year. Again, these are proposed times. As of now, this isn't set in stone. We're just talking through the process. So our new times, the proposed time would be secondary, starting at 7:15, ending their day at 2:50. Elementary, starting their day at 8:10, ending their day at 3:45. So, you know, the big question, why do you want to do this? So really, there's a lot of reasons, probably our top five, that, you know, we feel are most important and most impactful. This balances our instructional minutes between the secondary and elementary levels. Right now, elementary has fewer minutes than secondary, so this balances those minutes at 455 at all grade levels. This fills three days of cushion into our calendar, so we do have hurricanes around here. Sometimes it even freezes, so without having to take those weather days, change up the schedule, we can account for that and meet our minutes. There's some safety aspects to it as well. Our younger kids won't be waiting outside as early in the morning in the dark for the bus, so we thought that was a very important thing. And then on the flip side of that, their siblings on the secondary level will be at home when those younger kids get home in the afternoon, help those kids off the bus, you know, that kind of deal as well. So I just thought from a safety aspect, it's very important. And then some things specific to secondary, by ending the day sooner at secondary, there's less class time missed for those secondary kiddos that are involved in extracurricular events, athletics, fun arts, ag, whatever it may be. And then we all know how challenging it is to find subs and classroom coverage and all that, so it also makes it where we have fewer classes to cover at the end of the day due to kids leaving and teachers and coaches going off to those various activities. So I'm sure all the principals have their own pros and cons to it, but definitely it's been part of an overarching conversation, and we're looking into it for next year. So it's some timelines as far as, you know, how this decision process works that kind of officially gets out there tonight with me giving this report. Starting tomorrow, Dr. Powers will put a section on our district website, very similar to what we do with rezoning. There'll be an email address, so parents, community members, they can submit, you know, whatever questions or concerns or comments they may have about the proposed time changes. We can respond to those, you know. We can also look, see if there's any common themes with all those and say, hey, they're thinking about something we didn't. That way, we can have that conversation. So that'll go live tomorrow, and then when we come back here next month at our November meeting, we'll kind of set things in stone based on that feedback and based on more conversations. And then with those time changes, if there's any policy changes, things of that nature, we take care of those then. And again, that is for the '22-'23 school year. This isn't like starting in January or anything, so this would start August of '22. And so the times we're looking at, just to restate it once more, secondary would start at 7:15, end at 2:50. Elementary would start at 8:10 and end at 3:45. Any questions from you guys?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. One, I appreciate that y'all are looking at this because I do, I hear a lot from people that they're not happy with our current start and stop time situation. That said, I am kind of surprised to see elementary getting out so late, so I would be curious to know what we could do to maybe move that 3:45 closer to 3:15, 3:30. I know we talked a little bit about the transportation. I'll let you chime in on that.
Right.
Something I want to follow up on before we go into that. You had talked about we were adding minutes to the elementary day. How many minutes are we adding per day longer than what we're going now? It sounds like we're going to be going seven and a half hours under the new proposal. What are we at now?
Remember, Mr. Kessler, five minutes.
We're only adding five minutes per day?
Right.
And that equates to three full days of cushion at the end of the year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay.
I prefer the easier math. I rounded it up.
(laughing) All right. Well, I'll let you weigh in on the transportation issues.
Yes, it's basically what it equates to is our transportation department needs about 55 minutes to make that turnaround.
Okay.
And so that's where the 2:50 to 3:45 difference is, is so that our bus drivers can get those secondary kids home, make it back to those elementary campuses, you know, to pick up kids, take them back home. But that was, Mr. Ressler thought he and his crew could get that done in that amount of time.
So we do use buses for both routes right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because when we talked about a couple of years ago, it was...
Yeah, without doubling your bus fleet and your drivers.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay.
You have to do the tiered approach.
Okay.
So yes, but the 55 minutes was the, probably I would say, the absolute minimum that it would take to get all those bus riders turned around.
Okay.
On and off campus. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. I just, I do have concerns about the lateness of the elementary dismissal, but can you turn your mic on? Yeah. Can you turn?
Whenever I would drop Tyler off, which he's graduated now, but that's a guilt to me, but there would be a lot of kids dropped off 10 to 15 when he was at Oakley, way before they were teaching there. And so that just concerns me, those elementary kids being dropped off beforehand. So I mean, I just, if we can do that, can we look at maybe having somebody there? No, we can arrange their schedules where they're supervised. You know, and we can even, you've heard some of the principals talk about how still 4545 and catching kids up for things, so they're just not going to be sitting out in the dark. We'll get them in the building, keep them safe, get them fed breakfast, get the learning going as soon as possible. So no, good point, but we're going to take care of that there. Any other questions?
Yep.
All right.
Leave him with the mic? Oh, Ty's mic wasn't.
Nope.
Oh, it was on. Oh, okay.
Hello?
I was just asking about the kids that get dropped off, the elementary kids that get dropped off before school starts, when their parents have to get to work, because I saw it firsthand with, at Oakley, when my son was there, there would be 10 kids sitting out there underneath the breezeway at 6:30 in the morning before, long before teachers got there, and it was just a, you know, it just bothers me. I'd rather a secondary kid sitting out front's one thing, but an elementary kid's totally different, sitting out there by himself. So I was just asking if we could make sure we had somebody there to open up or whatever.
Yeah, but the email address is going to go live, so if we see a trend from the community with comments, then we will assess from there.
Correct, yes. What we'll do is that email essentially populates a Google form. We can check that every day to see, you know, if there's a common thread between concerns, comments, and then we can go back and adjust our plan or, you know, reach out for conversations, how that works. Yes, ma'am.
Thank y'all for thinking innovatively.
Motion being moved and seconded. There being no further discussion or vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye. No, the motion is approved. Moving into item nine on the agenda is consideration of the voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney ISD. Ms. Amarentos, did I get it?
You perfectly, you really did.
Wasn't because of me.
You really do say it perfectly.
And Liz, they helped me, so.
It doesn't matter what you call me. So tonight, this item is being presented for the consideration of the approval for the NCIS voluntary exit incentive, and as a reminder, it reduces the amount of open positions by allowing us to hire early during what is considered prime-time recruiting season where highly qualified candidates are. It gives us more of an accurate forecast for open positions prior to the start of the summer, and it looks like this has been a very successful thing for New Caney because this is not the first time it is being presented and something that's been going on for quite some time. So we're presenting it tonight because it's working for us.
Do you know the date for, is it January or February? Do you have it off the top of your head?
I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it's, I think it is February. Yeah.
Just for the ones that don't understand, it basically incentivizes the ones that are going to be moving out into other, maybe other types of work or moving to another school or something along those lines. We incentivize retiring or whatever's going on. It incentivizes them to let us know early so we can capture the best we can early on, and it's been a very successful program, probably going on for seven or eight years now.
And it encourages people to not wait until that last drop-dead deadline to resign in the summer where, once they resign...
What we'll do is that email essentially populates a Google form. We can check that every day to see, you know, if there's a common thread between concerns, comments, and then we can go back and adjust our plan or, you know, reach out for conversations, however that works. Yes, ma'am.
Thank y'all for thinking innovatively.
Motion being moved and seconded. There being no further discussion or vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Those know the motion is approved. Moving into item nine on the agenda is consideration of the voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney ISD. Ms. Amarentos. Did I get it? Wasn't because of me.
You really do say it perfectly.
Endless, they helped me.
It doesn't matter what you call me. So tonight, this item is being presented for the consideration of the approval for the NCIS voluntary exit incentive. And as a reminder, it reduces the amount of open positions by allowing us to hire early during what is considered prime-time recruiting season where highly qualified candidates are. It gives us more of an accurate forecast for open positions prior to the start of the summer. And it looks like this has been a very successful thing for New Caney because this is not the first time that it's being presented and something that's been going on for quite some time. So we're presenting it tonight because it's working for us.
Do you know the date for, is it January or February? Do you have it off the top of your head?
I don't have the date off the top of my head, but it's, I think it is February. Yeah.
Just for the ones that don't understand, it basically incentivizes the ones that are gonna be moving out into other, maybe other types of work or moving to another school or something along those lines. We incentivize retiring or whatever's going on. It incentivizes them to let us know early so we can capture the best we can early on. And it's been a very successful program, probably going on for seven or eight years now.
And it encourages people to not wait until that last drop-dead deadline to resign in the summer, where once they resign, that's it. Then we're out in the recruiting arena trying to recruit anyone out there that is not on a contract. There's always a scary reason for that. So this really does just open the door wide open for us to really focus on really good recruiting season, a really good time to really get those high-quality candidates in because we already know those positions are open. So put you behind the A-ball when you don't. Rescind their agreement? I don't have the data for how many people would rescind their agreement. I have some numbers in terms of how many folks took advantage of it last year. And now that you say that, I think I only had, I think I did look at that data today. I think there was only about six folks last year that rescinded. So I do have that in the top of my head. So it's a very low number that rescinded and I think that that number has been probably improved each year. Now everyone's kind of got the hang of how this works and, you know, looking at that. So...
And the incentive is based on years of service, depending on...
Yeah, and it's all broken down a certain way if you want to hear that right now or...
And is that a combined or is it just here only? Would it be if a person had worked 15 years somewhere and 15 here?
So it works this way. So if you've been here one to 10 years in our district, it would be just a $1,000 fee. If you've been here, if you've had, I'm sorry, if you have 11 to 20 years of experience, it's $2,000. Now, to get the big payoff, it doesn't matter. So if you have 21 years or more in education, creditable years of service, you also have to have four consecutive years in New Caney to get the $5,000 payoff if you qualify for that. So the other lower fees are, we're looking at just creditable years of service. But that one that kind of makes a jump, you have to have been here earning four years of your service here and not sporadically. So is there anything else that you guys need?
Anybody have any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other further questions or discussion on that matter? Is there a motion to approve voluntary exit incentive agreement for New Caney ISD? Motion has been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion or vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye. Know the motion is approved. There being no further business, meeting is adjourned at 7:07.